July 29, 2024, special meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. I'll begin by calling the role of the board members. Ms. Brezner?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Hassinger?
I'm here.
Mr. Venkataraman? Prabhu? Prabhu? He's muted. I see Mr. Venkataraman on Zoom, but he... Prabhu, can you hear us?
Looks like you're muted. Got to get him.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Prabhu is present. Mr. Robbins is present. Staff present is Town Planner, Ms. Coughlin.
Present.
And Office Manager, Ms. Awward.
Present.
Associate Member, Mr. Dohmoy.
Here.
Excellent. All right. This is a somewhat unusual circumstance. This hearing was postponed from July 22 due to the number of people wanting to attend the hearing exceeding the capacity of this conference room. For tonight's hearing, we've set up Conference Room F upstairs to accommodate the overflow from this room. Attendees in Conference Room F will be able to view the meeting live in the room and speak via a Zoom terminal set up adjacent to the room. This is the best we were able to do on relatively short notice to accommodate a large crowd, as well as accommodating attendance via Zoom. The seating capacity in both meeting rooms is 48. We have exactly enough chairs in each room so that if you are unable to... If you enter this room and aren't able to find a seat, you need to go upstairs to Room F. If Room F fills up as well, which don't anticipate, but we're as prepared for that as we can be, if the attendance exceeds the capacity of both rooms combined, we will have to postpone the hearing since we are unable to accommodate everybody within the fire codes. So we will cross that bridge if we come to it. We will have to pick a date and a time, a place probably, to be determined. Likely, if we do have to postpone this due to capacity limits, we will be required to either do it entirely in person or entirely via Zoom because we don't have the facilities to accommodate a larger in-person crowd and Zoom at the same time. So like I said, we will cross that bridge if we come to it. Staff upstairs will let us know if that room has reached capacity. But for now, we will proceed. We will first hear from the applicant with any updates to the project, of which I believe we have a few. So we'll hear from the applicant with updates. The board and the applicant will discuss as needed. And once the board is basically finished discussing, we will open the floor for public comment. I will have more to say at that time about how we will be conducting the public comment. So for now, let's begin with updates on the project.
Sure. First and foremost, thank you very much for accommodating our request for a special hearing tonight. I know it was quite quick to pull this together, so we really appreciate that. My name is Jean Christie. I'm a Principal Engineer with Time &amp; Bond. Here tonight with a bunch of other people that I know... You've seen Brendan before, but you haven't seen the other folks, so I'm going to ask you all to introduce yourself.
Sure. Brendan Giblin of Brendan Properties, co-developer for the site.
Phil O'Brien of Brendan Properties, the head of construction for our company.
Ashley Gilchrist with Time &amp; Bond, Project Engineer.
Matt Stouts, Traffic Engineer from Time &amp; Bond.
And attending virtually tonight, we have a number of folks. John Grant, who I know you've heard before as, you know, co-applicant at 1727 Upton Street. And I'm not going to go through everybody online, but we have also our Architecture folks, and then some landscaping and other traffic and permitting and planning. So Fiona, are you able to pull up the presentation?
Yes.
Just so we have a little agenda. So we prepared tonight a presentation, a little more organized than we've done in the past, because there are a lot of points I want to hit and make sure I get all of them. You can go right to the next one.
Sure.
All right, so there's a quick agenda of what we're going to look at tonight. We have a revised fly-through video. We're going to play that for everyone first and foremost, and give you some updates on where the architectural design stands, some of the bits and pieces that have been refined. We'll go through the site plan revisions, which are substantial. We can go through the peer reviews and give you an update of where they are. I tagged onto that some Fire Department updates because it was just general updates like that, so we're going to scratch that one off the bottom. But nestled in there is the Mass Historic Society update. That's a big one. And then a quick summary at the end. So go ahead. So hopefully this plays. Yeah.
Yes, should be good. I pre-downloaded it, so...
So I'm going to ask John Fisher from our Architecture team to help walk through the flyover as we go through it. There are a couple of things to note that we have modified in this fly-through. The first and foremost thing that you'll see is that the barn is retained in this fly-through. We'll get to that later, but it's there for now. And we've made some modifications to, you know, the viewing, how we're viewing it, what elevation. I'll have John talk through that.
Certainly, starting at the Commons and going into the site with the three-story plus cupola inn on the left and the library on the right, and progressing down Upton Street with the project approaching on the left-hand side. And then you see the barn here just after crossing the railroad tracks. And utilizing that, which is, Jean said, we'll get into that in a little bit. Post office, then private property on the left, that sits between the two lot entrances, and then our multifamily structure here on the left. And there have been some modifications, pointing out the single chimney feature on each end, similar to the fire station and the library structures, calling out some of those features with the gabled-in roofs. And then we're just beyond the site with the trees and all to the right, then back to the garage here, entrance off of Upton and front of the property.
We can go back to that again later with those questions, if we can just keep going through everything, okay? If you head to the next slide, John can give a little more detail on some of the architectural updates and things that we're refining as we're working through just the design of the building.
This is...
I'll go back.
Yeah, thank you. Showing the existing utility building that's on the site and vegetation along the road. That vegetation will be maintained. And then, as I pointed out earlier, do we have the renderings, Jean?
No, we have just this one.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Then the chimney ends of the building with masonry, brick masonry on the end caps. And this is a four-story structure. I noted earlier that the inn on the corners is a three-story structure, plus the cupola being four. We have pitched roofs and the white trim and trying to bring in some of the features of the windows with stone detailing on those brick end caps.
Okay. Move to the next one. So now we'll look at some of the site plan modifications that we've made. At our last meeting on June 24, we did receive some information from Town Council about the inability to waive various requirements. So what we've done is we have revised the project layout. It was really just the parking that needed to be revised. We did not relocate the building. We didn't change the building size. But I think that the first and foremost part, just clarify with everybody, is that we are proposing 31 affordable housing units. That is, you know, 25% of the 122 when you round that number up within your whole. So I think that was something we just wanted to confirm with everybody here.
Yeah. Momentary interruption.
Yep.
I saw someone come in. Did you find a seat, a chair?
There's a chair. And there are like six.
All right, well, I want to be cognizant of the capacity of the room. If you cannot find a seat and a chair, the overflow room upstairs in Room F will accommodate that. Otherwise, we'd like you to be seated in a chair, please. That way, we can be sure we're not exceeding the capacity of the room. Thank you. Okay, sorry.
So the modifications to the site plan included pulling parking spaces outside of the building setback areas, making sure we had a 10-foot-wide planted buffer along all property lines. We're providing additional shade trees along the right-of-way. Couple other things, we're looking at the outdoor amenity spaces and what we're providing and how much we're providing. And we did get some clarification from the Town Planner about what those are, and we are meeting that requirement completely now. And then a couple other smaller things. Because of some of these revisions and discussions we've had, we revised some fencing around the outside of the perimeter of the project along the wetland buffer. This is a Conservation Commission requirement to have some fencing there. First, we had, you know, split-rail wood fencing, and it's been requested that we do something a little more easy to maintain. So at this point, we're proposing boulders along that 25-foot buffer zone where we have that buffer. And then last thing is that previously, it's a very small detail, but in the northwest corner of the building, we had a small rotating wall. We were able to now eliminate that from the project to further reduce impacts in the wetland resource areas or buffer zones. A couple things to point out with the Conservation Commission. We don't have a hearing with them until the 13th of August. So at this point, you know, we will have worked through some of the peer review things, so we should be comfortable with them. One community concern that has come up a couple times here and there and in some public comment is about flooding. And I do want to, you know, remind the board and members of the audience that the stormwater design did go through peer review. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Because of the stormwater quality and quantity measures that we need to comply with, we are reducing the volume of water, leaving the site by 45%. That's kind of, that's a lot of water in terms of stormwater runoff from a previously disturbed site. And it's improved. If you remember today, the stormwater management on the DPW site, former site, is minimal. There's a couple catch basins. I'm not sure they really work, but there's definitely lack of infiltration and lack of treatment. So the stormwater design does comply with local and state regulations for stormwater management. So now we have a couple figures where we're going to go through some of those changes again. Fiona, if you want to switch to the next one. This is existing conditions. You can see, Fiona, you may need to use a pointer and point a little bit. The center of the page is the former DPW facility. You can see what's the serb today and what kind of vegetated buffer there is. You can see a different change in vegetation on the left-hand side of that, you know, primary development area. That's some invasives, invasive species in the wetland that we're mitigating and managing, removing those. If you go to the next one, you can see what the development impact is here. And it's a good switch when you have it, you know, the same size. We're not encroaching onto that buffer, that existing tree line. We're, you know, that's protected by wetlands. We can't do anything there. So we are still staying within that footprint of the developed area. What also this layout shows is, in general, it didn't change from our original proposal to the board. We did tighten things up, and we did lose parking. We think we're at 180 parking spaces here. 179 is required by zoning. With this layout, there is still vegetated buffer against all property lines, even on the post office, which doesn't have one for our site. They're kind of have parking right up against the property line. But we are providing that 10-foot planted buffer with various vegetation. And Fiona, the next two are really just zoomed in a little bit more. We wanted to show context to, you know, everybody in the audience and the abutters, you know, what the project is in their yards here. So yeah, you can just go to the next one. Existing conditions again. And this one, you know, with a little more color, shows the improvements that we're making around the outside of the building to an existing degraded buffer zone for the wetlands. Replanting, revegetating, improving it, again, maintaining or taking care of those invasive species. With the modified parking and pulling everything into the setbacks, there were some changes to the outdoor amenity spaces, but we're still providing, you know, community gardens and some play spaces for kids, a little outdoor space, bocce courts, seating area, cooking area type things. The amenity spaces on the east side of the project really remained unchanged. We are providing, you know, the outdoor living spaces towards the back of the building and then various pockets here and there throughout the rest of the site. All right. So if you can go to the next one, give a status update on some of our peer reviews. So we provided revised drawings and stormwater design to accommodate the revised layout to peer review, both peer review, I guess, but the civil and stormwater peer review, I think around the 18th. Previously, they had issued a letter saying that, you know, we had addressed their comments. So, you know, our approach to stormwater was approved. We had met the other zoning requirements and had some discussion back and forth with them. But they do have another review of the most recent materials. But I had a conversation with GEI on Thursday explaining, talking through how our approach to stormwater hasn't changed. The layout really on that left side of the project hasn't changed a lot. Yeah, it's been tweaked, but the general approach to it, everything's the same. So we're still waiting on that piece. Traffic is a bigger topic to talk about tonight. We did receive an updated final letter from Traffic Peer Review Consultant last week. In that letter, there were a number of items that were still to be addressed. Nothing to be addressed with our analysis. Most of these are, we have some other things to talk about, and we can go through each of those. I think I have five of them. And this is where it's going to tie into the Fire Department at the end of this one, so bear with me. The first one's being a road safety audit. That was looking at, you know, the existing infrastructure in the area in Upton Street and seeing what improvements could be made, you know, where are crashes happening, how are they happening, what improvements could happen. And it was recommended that we consider doing that. In a meeting I had, again, with folks in town, and Fiona, you were there on Thursday morning, it was with the Fire Department and Paul Conoyer, and it was discussed that the road safety audit may not be needed, that Upton Street's generally pretty safe. And so that's something that we decided that we did not want to pursue at this time. It is, you know, of course, a discussion with the board. The next piece was regarding short-term parking. You know, that's been a topic we've talked about before. In the current proposal, we have one space proposed for short-term parking because we didn't want to take away from the required 179 spaces. So that's the one space we have extra. We're going to talk later about a different layout that's going to provide a couple more spaces, so that will come full circle again. There's a comment about signage, the monument signs, and making sure that they don't inflict with some of our site lines. Because the sign permit's not specific to right now, we would like to try to condition that as a potential condition of approval, that when we do go for a sign permit, that we're looking at the site lines, you know, to make sure that we have enough visibility from each direction if there's any signs in the way, and that's depending on height and location. And I think the last couple things were, I almost got it wrong, rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So MDM recommended looking at installing a RFB at the crosswalk that is proposed by Mass DOT, kind of in front of the barn, in front of that auxiliary parking area going across to Cumberland Farms. And it's not installed yet, but that is something that we are willing to fund if the town is interested in pursuing that. I don't think it's going to be part of this project, but we will, you know, we can provide the funding to the town in some sort of agreement to do so. And then the last piece, the bigger piece of some of the traffic comments was in regard to the Fire Department's request for a signal, an emergency traffic signal at their driveway to control both traffic on Upton Street coming out of our site driveway. We talked about this with the Fire Department. This signal's not an inexpensive one. It's about, you know, $300,000. And it's an existing problem today. You know, we talked with the Fire Department about exactly what the challenges are. And, you know, while this project isn't creating that problem, we understand that there is, you know, our fair share of impact on it. So what we're proposing at this time is a fair share payment to go towards funding that. You know, it's, the construction cost being $300,000 approximately is pretty prohibitive and challenging, not to mention some of the DOT coordination that will go along with that. So that's where, that's kind of where we are with that part of it. Is there anything else that I needed to add, Matt?
That was it.
Okay. One more piece onto the Fire Department. They have a set of plans now that they're looking at, the traffic circulation internally, as well as some of our utility connections and where the Fire Department connection is for the building and things like that. So those are those three updates. Now, if you go to the next slide, Fiona, this is a bigger topic. So Mass Historic had issued their findings on the demolition of the barn, and they said that it's an adverse effect. And what that requires is if we are going to demolish the barn, we need to do alternatives analysis, and there's the potential for MEPA, for us to have to go through MEPA. That does put some challenges into the timeline of the project. So at this point, we looked at, how can we retain the barn? How can we repurpose the barn? Can we make a layout work with the barn there? And what we have here on this figure is, you know, it has not been fully developed into site plans, but we are confident now that we can provide a layout that provides parking, enough parking, includes even two additional spots, as well as the stormwater management in the same fashion that it was proposed previously. So what this did was kind of pull parking more towards that eastern and southern corner of that L, leaving that top-left spot, you know, west and north spot for the stormwater management basin, which we previously had in that area. And then it proposes using the barn as three parking spaces. We're counting three. We think that we can get six with like tandem spaces in it, but we're only counting three of those spaces. So this concept of, you know, reusing the barn, Brendan, correct me if I'm wrong, restoring the face of the barn to make it look better. You can see from our video kind of what our vision would have been. But we still do have to coordinate with Mass Historic on if that's going to be an allowable modification to the barn. But we're confident that we can make the rest of it work. Some other things that this layout allows is back to those short-term parking spaces. Because we're gaining a few spaces in this layout, we can add more short-term parking. We would add those right up front at the main entrance of the building. It also increases kind of the buffer to those properties to the immediate west and immediate northwest, you know, pulling parking or other development away from that and putting a stormwater basin, which is pretty quiet of a neighbor, is an increase to that. I did speak with the peer review consultant for stormwater about this very briefly on Thursday, and, you know, mentioned that we're going to go with the same approach of pervious pavers in their parking lot and a stormwater basin. And he, you know, was, my understanding was he wasn't terribly concerned about it. He saw, you know, the layout did not have any fatal flaws, you know, right off the bat. So that was promising for us. Okay. So I think, is there anything else you wanted to add before we turn over to the board?
No, I don't think so. I just, about the barn, you know, we didn't necessarily initially understand or appreciate the historic nature, but having had that kind of ruling come down, I think we're, you know, certainly open to and making it become not only a visual asset, but also, you know, utilizing it for some storage and whatnot. So we've got a couple of early renderings of it, and I think it actually looks great.
So Fiona, just one more slide to wrap up, to reiterate a couple things, just to remind everyone what we've done. Revised that layout to now comply with the zoning. There is no need for any relief from, you know, a waiver or a variance for this project. Peer reviews are really close to complete, I think, at this point. And, you know, I'm comfortable with, you know, their findings not coming back with anything terribly substantial. And then remind folks about the density, the density, the unit density that's grantable under a special permit being, you know, between 12 and 20, requiring that special permit. We're currently at 17 units per acre. And I have lots of other notes, but I think we'll let the board ask your questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Anybody?
I have some, but I don't know how we want them.
Proceed. Whoever speaks, that person says they have questions, gets to ask.
Sure. So one thing that I want to just briefly mention, Fiona, as well, if I can share, because I have something to show that I saw today that came to mind, but...
Sure.
Before I get the sharing up, the total parking that you're providing, does that count include the temporary spaces?
Yes. The 180 includes that one spot, so we have 179 that we need, and then that 180th spot is extra.
Okay. That's what I was just checking. The other thing that came to mind with the new layout and seeing the newer video is just the separation between the west, you know, the distant parking lot and the post office park, you know, drive-through area for it. In my mind, it might make sense to have some sort of fencing between the, you know, main driving spot of the post office, considering how close it is to the edge of the property there, because people do have to drive around the post office to get through the way that is designed, and it might be just easier than having people stay, they park closer to the road, they're going to walk across the post office instead.
I see, okay.
I don't think that would be a make-a-break point for me, but that's something I think is, might be good to do.
We can do that.
Um, the thing I wanted to share, what I'll do right now, is just about the relative safety of Upton Street. This is basically a screenshot that I'm going to also send to the record, but of our GIS site, and this is showing the number of crashes reported from 2002 to 2021 in, you know, in the Upton Street, in your area here. And the yellow is basically four or less crashes. So you can see this one, if you look at this area, is three. So in basically 20 years roughly, it's a pretty decent, you know, small number of crashes, and I would concur with the assessment that it is a relatively safe road. Yes, we have had a handful of crashes at the Common in the last, you know, few years at least, but that's not, you know...
Handful.
Yeah, handful, but... Yeah, I just, the overall record of this area is fairly safe.
So can I ask a question then? What would you attribute that to, the safety of this? You can bring it back up. You can let everybody see it.
Sure.
What would you contribute the safety of so few crashes on that road?
I don't have, I'm not a traffic, I'm not a safety expert on this. We do have a safety, Traffic Safety Committee in town that consists of either the police chief or someone from many delegates. I forget who's on it officially. And I would consider asking that question to them, because I don't want to presume the answer, but I do, from what I'm seeing with data, is what I'm going by.
Well, okay, so are these brown, we considered all the brown areas, homes or apartments or accessory dwelling units or...
This is...
Family housing, all of the above?
All, this is any, the brown is roughly speaking, any building that is built on a property. This is our GIS. It's approximate. It's not an exact science here.
So it looks like there's a lot of crashes where we have high-density living and a lot less crashes where we have buildings more spread out and less density. I mean, it's something that you can take away from this GIS map.
I would disagree. I think the fact that there's these yellows, four or less, this is right in front of the Common, four. The high-density areas, there's really no, almost no traffic, almost no crashes at all. And if you want to get more particular with the data on this screen, you can do an actual crash incidence and look at each one. Was there even a property damage, only no injuries, for example? And you can look at that and see all that data with our GIS. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to presume a cause and effect situation here. This is 20 years of data, and...
Yeah, I think Bob has a comment.
There's a reddish, brownish, light brown, that's it.
Yes.
Now, that is, tell me about that.
That is 11 accidents at that corner. That is 11 accidents at that corner in the last roughly 20 years. That's the amount of data I know from that. I haven't pulled any records, I was literally looking at this today about 3:00 PM and I saw it.
Audience wants to talk now.
That's crashes, but also, I'm not sure that we have any good measure, well, not right-handed anyway, about how well traffic works at that intersection.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that a little bit if that's all right. So that intersection is Milbury Street and the Grafton Common, I believe.
No, it's, um,
Yes, Milbury Street.
Milbury Street, Wister's Street, Upton Street.
Yeah, we have the two stop signs at the four-way stop, right? It's hard to see from here.
We know, we live here.
Okay. Yeah, so that intersection did come up in our study. And now for our study, we looked at the previous five years of data and this ended up being a crash rate that was higher than the average crash rate for the state. So we pointed this out in our study and the peer reviewer asked us to get more recent data from the police department to kind of take a deeper dive into like, what's going on here, like why are these crashes happening? And so we noted some existing deficiencies with site distance that kind of aligned with the types of crashes we were seeing. We're seeing a lot of angle crashes, you know, as you're taking a left from either direction out of there, you can't really see around the building to the north. So we pointed these things out to the peer viewer and noted these as existing issues, not, not as much an impact for our site traffic.
You have anything else, Justin?
Nothing from me.
Andrea, anything else?
I want to hear what the comments from the audience are first.
I have one like background question, just because, you know, you gave us a nice overview of where we're at today. I'm kind of the new guy, I've been on the board only for, this is my fourth meeting or something like that. So to do my homework, I kind of went back and looked at the RFP that the town put out and the original response from GSX. And so there's some significant differences from what you have here to that. So I guess, you know, a question to you or to Fiona, you know, how does that factor into this proceeding, right? So the original stuff has commercial space with restaurants, the barn is a community space, you know, it's, it's, it's quite different than this. How do we evaluate that as a part of this process?
Yes, so, yeah, that's a good point, Greg. So yes, when the RFP was issued back in 2021, we only received one respondent, which was GSX. So out of, you know, what we would typically evaluate, three plus bidders, we only had one. And at the time, you know, we were advocating for mixed use in the area, commercial elements, et cetera. And, you know, what we, what was responded did state that they would have those elements there. At this point in time, and we're, we're kind of checking on this, myself and, and the TA's office, about how strict the compliance would need to be, but the applicant is adhering to the zoning bylaw. So that's really like the board, and the board's job is to evaluate proposals based on compliance with the bylaw. So, Mr. Chair, we just, you know, folks have comments, you know, they should approach the podium and not yell out. It's going to make it awkward.
I think if I may, just to kind of
Sure.
Further to that, again, Brendan Giblin, I'm relatively new to the project, maybe a little more seasoned than, than the four meetings.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's important to note that this project wasn't developed in a vacuum and it was really a coordinated effort with a lot of stakeholders within the town, you know. And even since my involvement, working through, you know, the affordable housing and increasing the percentage of housing, the development of the housing there being a good, you know, a good complement to existing, you know, retail uses that are in, in the commons.
Yeah, it's, it's important to keep in mind that we are reviewing the project that is before us relative to compliance with the zoning bylaw. How it got to this point prior to being submitted to the board is maybe historically interesting, but it's not, it's not a factor in compliance with the zoning bylaw.
But I am interested in the subject because there are a lot of people interested in the subject. And trace, the select board put out an RFP. You folks responded to it and your initial response was consistent with what they had in the RFP, shops and all that sort of thing. Then somewhere along the line, that changed. And did the select board then agree to accept your revised plan?
I don't, I don't know if that happened. John?
And I, I believe it did because there was an addendum to the initial agreement that was done based on, you know, this, this current plan. So there was the initial purchase and sale that was done with
If I can, if I can just step in here. Yes, we met with Evan Bressard and the planning director at that time and discussed the changes. The major changes were made because we moved it from being a, an independent living facility, which had a whole lot more units because it had a much lower parking count, to traditional apartments with, with affordable component. That independent living had no affordable units in it and the town approached us to ask if we would consider making it affordable and doing 25% so that they could be all counted towards the, the town's requirement. And in those meetings, which we have documented, Evan and the planner, planning director at that town agreed to the changes that we made in direction. Also, it reduced the amount of traffic and, you know, we have commercial uses, you have much more parking, much more traffic. And for people who are living in, in regular apartments, having commercial onsite, especially in something like this, is not that attractive a thing because they start taking your parking spaces and things like that. But I hope that answers your question. This took two years to come up with. So it's been, it's been a long process with your, with your city government.
It does not answer my question. You came forward to
Please be quiet out there, one person at a time gets to speak. We, you guys will all have a chance to speak, but not quite yet.
You spoke to some, some part of the administration about changing it. What I'm trying to find out is whether the Board of Selectmen had any say-so in the change. Are they responsible or are staff responsible for what we have now? Had you, had you already purchased the property? Have you purchased the property now?
We have it under agreement, yes.
Have not purchased, have not closed. The, the property was under a purchase and sale agreement, at which time that the affordable housing was renegotiated, there was a
By whom?
Town Council, Selectmen. I, I don't think anybody would be able to enter into a formal agreement or an adjustment to the agreement. I, I don't have the document
This is what I and other people want to know.
Well, the city solicitor was, was the person who created that document. So your city solicitor was the person that actually put the extension document together along with your town manager.
But, but who signed it?
It's the PNS, that's not a change in plan.
Who signed that document?
I believe your town manager signed that document. I think he sent it around and had other people from the, from the, from the, the board sign it as well. And then it was signed by our party too.
Did the select board members sign it?
I don't have it in front of me, but I would say it had to be signed by them. I wish Evan was here because he would, he would be able to tell you about that.
Bob, I've looked at the documents. I've reviewed the documents, I've looked at the PNSs. It does not include a change in the process. It includes a change to how long they're going to get to close on the land. So they had a year, then they came back for another year and then they had two more years. So, and when he referred to Evan as the planning director, he is not the planning director.
No, I didn't say that. I said the planning director at that time.
They, they don't have
The gentleman that was before Fiona, as planning director, was in those meetings and he accepted the changes as well as Evan.
They, they did the PNS, that's what they did.
Who did?
The, the, the select board signed for a PNS, that's what it was. It wasn't a change in the plans, it was a PNS.
Yeah. What about the change in the plans?
They, they didn't sign for that. They did, they did not change this entire project and not, and, and have it written out like this.
I'd like to recognize Matt Ofton, who is a member of the select board, who can speak to the select board's role in this.
Sure. I'll just speak to this specific issue. So the select board did sign a new PNS, which was, represented an extension. It didn't come with a new plan. It really was just the terms of the purchase and sales agreement to give them some extra time. That was the nature of what the select board signed. It didn't have to do with the site plan.
No, but I, I do believe at that time that it was clear because that addendum to the agreement actually references in agreement with the, with the housing authority, the affordable housing. So at that
Submitted drawings at that point in time too, because we were already reviewing them with the city. I can find those drawings for you, but that, at that point in time, this was changed.
Sounds, sounds to me like some additional information needs to be acquired in order to fully answer the question here. Right now, we're getting, getting into territory of, well, we think this or it's a little bit speculation. So I would recommend pursuing this particular question offline, coming back to the next hearing with all, all the answers.
Can I just comment on what he just said about the Affordable Housing Trust? So the Affordable Housing Trust, they can make whatever agreement with you all that they want, they don't represent our town. So if they gave you money, $1.8 million to do whatever, they don't represent the town. So if they agreed to whatever changes, that doesn't, that doesn't represent what the town would agree for, so
Yeah, that, that's, that's not what I mean. That's, that's not what I mean by that, but it was referenced in that addendum to the agreement that was signed by the Selectmen. Reason for the extension had to do with the negotiations with them. So I'm not saying that it entitles anything, but it is representative of the fact that this affordable housing component was discussed at that time and referenced in, in the legal binding purchase agreement.
In the original documents, we had structured parking, we had only about 5,000 square feet of, of retail and that retail was related to the independent living. It was a, it was a, it was a home healthcare provider. It wasn't a store or restaurant or anything like that, it was a home healthcare provider.
This, this agreement, I'm sorry, I just, just received, the agreement was signed by Colleen Ray, the select board chair at the time?
Colleen Roy.
Okay. Good. No, I just received a copy of the document to figure out who the signature was.
And Ann Foley also said that in the chat. She said the chat is disabled, but she was able to put a comment in here. So that means everybody online can't put things in the chat to us tonight, I guess. But she said that it was the PNS without any changes to design, et cetera.
Yep. I, I'm reluctant to accept comments on Q and A and chat at this point. Again, this is where, right now, we're looking at the board asking questions. If the board is, is
Well, she's on the select board and she signed the document, so she was commenting.
Understood. Understood. But it's, it's not how I want to accept comments. So right now, I think there is still a bit of an open question as to, you know, some folks are questioning whether it's proper for the project to have reached this point under the terms of the original RFP and the purchase and sale. I don't think we're going to make any progress answering that. And I think there are probably a lot of other questions. If the board doesn't have anything else, I had one small question. You mentioned, you know, in your thinking about retaining the garage, I mean, the garage, the, the barn, sorry, as, as parking and you said maybe some storage, any other potential uses for the barn?
At this point, I don't think we've explored that. It's a conversation we need to have with Mass Historic as well as to what their, you know, goals are on, with that repurposing of the barn.
Yep. Consider the possibility of, depending on how that all works out, possibly some sort of a commercial use for part of the barn?
There's a problem with that.
Yes, a challenge with that.
Yes, I know.
Consider the possibility, but whether, whether it turns out to be practical is yet to be seen. You, you haven't gone very far into trying to work out what can be done with the barn. So that's to be determined.
Right.
Anything else from the board? If not, it's, I'd like to open this to public comment. And given the high level of interest and the rather large audience we have and the somewhat awkward arrangement we have with folks here, presumably we have some folks upstairs
Yes.
and folks on Zoom. I will try to be as, to try to be as orderly as possible. I would like to recognize comments first from people in this room, as many as have care to comment. Next, take comments from room F upstairs. And third, take comments from Zoom attendees. And I would like to ask that everybody be respectful of all of our time and attendance. Please wait to be recognized before you speak. Oh, and by the way, make sure you've signed in on the signup sheet that's by the entrance to, to both rooms. Again, wait to be recognized before you speak and be patient, because I think a lot of people are going to be wanting to speak. Identify yourself by name and address before you speak. And that's true whether you're in this room, in the room upstairs, or on Zoom. Make sure you start out by giving your name and address. Also, please be as brief as you can so that everybody has time to speak. I should note that any disruption will not be tolerated. If you, if you speak out of turn, if you start yelling and otherwise being disruptive, I'm going to ask you to please leave. If you're in person here in this room, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Upstairs, same thing. We have staff upstairs that will recognize you at the appropriate time and then explain to you how you can go about speaking. And on Zoom, if you're attending remotely, use the Zoom raise hand feature and we will allow you to speak on Zoom. It's important to me and I think the whole board that all issues raised by the public become part of the record. We've received comments at previous hearings, we've received a lot of comments in writing, those are all part of the record of this hearing. Everything that is said at any session of the hearing, whether the previous sessions tonight or future sessions, everything that is said will become part of the record. If an issue has been submitted in writing, we don't need anybody to stand up and say it again. It's on the record. It's important to get the issues on the record. It's not particularly interesting how many times people mention a particular issue. The issue itself is on the record. So if it's been submitted in writing, there's no need to repeat it in a public comment. If an issue has already been stated in a public comment, there's no need to repeat it. However, all attendees are welcome to offer a public comment. And I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to say what they want to say. But please note that if your comment is essentially repeats previous comments or previous issues that have been already stated in writing, please be very brief about reiterating that comment. We don't need, again, I want to be respectful of everybody's time. We have a lot of people here who I'm sure would like to speak. We have a limited amount of time. It's already 20 minutes past eight almost. And I'd like, I'd like, I'd like for us to be able to get through, give everybody a chance to have it, to say what they want to say. But again, brevity is best and avoid repetition, because we won't forget anything we hear. Once you've said it, it's on the record and we will remember it. So having said all that, I would like to open the floor to public comment from room A. The firsthand I see is over there. And please come to the podium to speak and again, name and address for the record.
David Nicholson, 39 North Street. There's a relatively recent law that, that often referred to as the MBTA law requiring a certain amount of affordable housing. Is this project needed for the town to meet that affordable limit or have we already met it with the current buildings and, and things that have already been approved that will be built?
We have not yet met the requirement for MBTA. And this project, from one angle, this project doesn't relate to that because of its nature. From another angle, it very much does.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, is they can, I'm not sure if the person speaking just now is confusing our SHI percentage with the MBTA community's overlay that was passed at last town meeting. I can respond to that and say most recent calculations that we're at 9.1%. We did recently, we believe, meet the criteria for the two-year safe harbor declaration, but we're still waiting from the state to get back to us on that EOHLC.
And what's the deadline for them to get back to us?
They should, they have 30 days to review and reply to the letter.
So we believe we're not safe harbor now.
So what's the final answer then?
We're, the original question was if the relationship between.
The original question was, as stated, the relationship to the MBTA zoning.
The MB.
And for that, this zoning district is part of our MBTA communities overlay district. This project, as a multifamily project, is consistent with that. It helps to meet that. The only aspect in which this doesn't directly relate to it is the fact that this project is being reviewed as a special permit for the MBT zoning requirement is as of right, but this project does meet the objective of building multifamily housing in the MBTA zoning district.
Yes.
So as a practical matter, it's very much related to that.
Yes, and if I may, Mr. Chair, so the applicant is only required to provide 10%. They are providing 25, so all of the units will count toward the inventory.
Yes. Any other questions? Back there, Craig.
Good evening. Craig Dolphane, 5 Bruce Street. Just want to go back to the question that Bob was asking, because I kind of went down that road, too, when I started looking into the details of this project. I'm a little late to the game, kind of like Greg is. So those are some of my concerns, and I've asked Fiona and Evan for all the documents related to this project. And when I read through the RFP, it was a beautifully written document with a lot of wonderful concepts and ideas and a beautiful rendition of a multifamily structure. All of that is gone. This project looks nothing and is a much, much different project than that was proposed of that RFP. So I went looking to see if there was an amendment to the RFP, and I was told that there wasn't any. The only thing that was done, which was mentioned, is an extension on the PNS agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the town and the applicant. But nowhere was there any change to this RFP. And like I said, this is a very different project. So I understand the work of the planning board is to look at the application before them, but it's concerning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question here in the room? Yes, sir.
Chuck Bresnahan, 9 Milbury Street. I just want to clarify something about the accidents. This is in their traffic report and then also the peer review. And from 2016 to 2020, at Worcester Street, Grafton Common, 24 accidents, okay? That's from 2016 to 2020. From 2022 to 2024, 21 accidents, not including the one just happened on Sunday. So it's not two over 20 years or so. So I just want to make that clear at the common. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Nicholson, Chairman of the Historic District Commission. We were asked, our commission was asked, I think it was last year, to respond to the original GSX proposition, proposal, I mean. And we said that we felt it was totally inappropriate for the area.
It was.
Totally inappropriate. It was a three-story building, a large one. Now, as Mr. Dolphane said, it's much larger, and it's four stories. And it is in no way appropriate to the historic Grafton Center. I just don't see how you could think otherwise. And I also had a question regarding the affordable units. Are there other proposals before the town now that would have affordable units in them? That haven't been approved yet, but that have been proposed?
Yeah.
We recently approved the 5 Millennium Drive project. We also, the 188 Providence Road is under construction. I don't want to speak, you know, I believe the ZB8 is not overseeing any 40B projects at the moment with this board. Those are the most recent projects with affordability elements to them, not including.
Would we meet the mandatory amount that we needed if those were approved? And excluding this project?
Yes, I believe, yes, we would.
Thank you.
I have a question before you step down.
Sure.
You, of course, you said you're on the Historic District Commission, and you mentioned with the last year you felt this was inappropriate and with these changes. My question is, is that a, is the change from last year to now an opinion of yourself or is that a voted opinion of your commission?
Of the whole commission.
Okay. And do you know offhand when that opinion was voted on, which meeting?
We didn't have a meeting this month in July. I'd have to check the minutes, but it was probably either May or June.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the room here? Handway in the back there.
Hi, David Barnhart, 68 Weston Street. I'll be quick. One, aesthetically, this doesn't look like it fits the character and the small townness, the feel that you want, that I think we want in Grafton. And then secondly, I just want to point out that if there had only been one, or they, GSX was the only developer who came in, that was under a different RFP. So I wonder, you know, it's hard to say, if you were allowed to put the same type of a project together, would you get more people looking at it? Would that value of that property be greater than it is? Because you came in under certain situations, now you've changed it. Other developments, other developers looking at what they would be allowed to do if you went forward with that may have a different opinion. They may be interested, and economically, it might be better for the town to have that kind of competition. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Matt Ofton, 79 O. Westboro Road. Just a couple of things. I'll really try to make this as quick as I can. My wife and I moved here over 20 years ago, and there's been a ton of changes in the last 20 years. And we loved Grafton when we first moved here, and we still love Grafton, even after all those changes, after thousands of new people moved in. So it's not about the number of people in town. Like, that's not what determines the community sense that everybody loves so much about Grafton. It's about how people treat each other. That's what builds community, is how people treat each other. For me, I want to be a guy who welcomes new families who want to come to Grafton. So that's what I'm about, because I think that's what community is about. So this sort of small-town feel, it's about how people interact with each other when we're out in town. So I just think that's important to note. And also, I've lived in all different kinds of homes. I've lived in apartments. I've lived in condos. I've lived in single-family homes. I've even lived in a trailer park for a little while, believe it or not. Those were all my home, where I spent time with my family, where I spent time with kids in a community. There's no one kind of home that is any more or less valid than any other home. So there's lots of reasons I support this project. It does bring lots of needed housing to Grafton. There's a minimal draw on town resources. So from like a tax standpoint, this is a very efficient, like bringing density into housing is extremely tax-efficient. It really, we don't need to build a lot of new infrastructure to accommodate for this housing. So that's really important to take, because everybody's always talking about how their taxes are too high. There's a great partnership with the Affordable Housing Trust. So this is allowing the Affordable Housing Trust to use CPC money to build very inexpensive affordable units. Way more inexpensive than if the Housing Trust was going to go try to build them themselves. So this is a good use of town money to provide affordable housing as well. This also is supporting local businesses. So you're putting, you know, the businesses, I really don't appreciate the sort of, the look that I'm getting. It's really not okay with me. So please, just, I'm just asking for some respect and not difficult looks from board members. I'm just, I'm just.
Excuse me, please.
No comments from the audience, please.
So we're supporting local businesses. We hear from the businesses up on the common that they need support from the town. We're bringing 120-plus families, many of which are high-income families, right into the common, within walking distance of all of those businesses at the common. So, you know, we all talk about support for local businesses. These are customers, good customers for the small businesses in Grafton. And, you know, finally, I think this is very much in line with what was originally envisioned for this project. It's not the same, and things have changed, but things change with every development that's, and the big thing that changed with this one is the pandemic and the inflation rise and the change in interest rates for borrowing money. So for the developer, I see a developer that's accommodating, and they were also definitely reacting to the Affordable Housing Trust and its need and its desire to build affordable units economically. So they're adjusting to conditions in their development as things go along. And yeah, it's not exactly the same as, maybe it's not, I don't know. Yeah, things have changed, but we have a housing development that's going in there that's very much in line with what the state envisions for this MBTA zone. It's not altogether, in terms of density, different than other developments that are going into town. So I just, I think the board needs to hear from town residents that support projects like this, and I'm one of them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt.
Susie and Paula in 47 Upton Street, Grafton, and I'm an abutter to the projects. I would like to have seen the project scaled down. However, they did make modifications, and hopefully in the future, they may make more. They were the only RFP, and I don't want to see a mini-mart or another gas station. This is our best time, or the best way we have to redevelop this area. The area's been depressed long enough. What is it being used for now? 10-wheelers, okay, right now, stopping at all times of the day, 2:00 in the morning or maybe 2:00 in the afternoon for rest breaks. We live there, we see it. Trash indiscriminately placed there. This project will clean it up. It will provide, number one, 140 with sidewalks. We're an entryway to the town. We're the only ones who don't have sidewalks. All the other interways have them, north, south, North Street, Milbury Street. They have sidewalks. We don't have them. This area will provide sidewalks. Also, it will give affordable apartments to young people coming into town, just graduated from college, starting their careers. They would never be able to afford Grafton. Now, not only would they be able to afford it, but they were close to the center. That's a good thing. Also, the shops will benefit. There's going to be a lot of walking traffic. They're going to utilize the town's small businesses, as well as the other businesses throughout the town. That's a good thing. Another good thing is the speed limit on 140 itself. Anyone who's been on 140 can see police cars monitoring that area on almost a daily basis. Where do they station their cars? The Highway Department and the Fire Department, and they stop many, many cars. This project will give it impetus to get that rate down, that speed limit down. That's dangerous. In conclusion, you talk about the entryway to Grafton. In 140, it's smack dab right in the center of the common. What is the entryway now? A depressed area, neglected, getting more and more depressed? It's not enhancing the area. It's mirroring it, and it's distracting from it. Something needs to be done, whether it's this project, but something needs to be done soon. The area's been depressed for a long time. It's being abused, and there should be an outcry about that. This project's coming in. Yeah, it's not perfect, but no project is perfect. But it will enhance the entryway to Grafton versus what exists now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the room here? Yes, sir.
Bill McCusker, 40 Blanchard Road. I'm a member of the ZBA, but speaking as an individual. A few things. First of all, I'm in support of the project. I hope we all can agree that there is a severe need for housing in Massachusetts, in central Massachusetts, in Grafton. We need housing, and I'm really tired of seeing forests being clear-cut. I'm tired of seeing farmland being bulldozed. We need to build dense housing like this. And I can't think of a better spot, well, I can't think of a better spot in Grafton right now. I mean, this is a very depressed area, as was just said. It's a mess, and this is where people come into our common. And we're so protective of the common, but, you know, we've got this absolute disaster that greets a mess on the way in. One thing that I've heard said a few times is it's not going to look right. It's too big. It's, you know, the gateway to the town, and this is what you're going to see. Those exact same comments I made while sitting on the ZBA with respect to the Prentice Place, three apartment buildings that are behind Bradishes. I said the exact same things. Three huge buildings. It's inappropriate for that area. It's too big. This is the gateway to the town from the north. This is wrong, all right? I'm on record saying that repeatedly, over and over and over again. We did make some changes to that project. I think we improved it, but even at the end, I still was not pleased with it, and I still felt, and I said it to the developer in private and in public. It's just wrong. Now, when I come down 140 from Shrewsbury, I don't even notice that. And I think most, anyone coming into town doesn't even notice that project. It's just another apartment complex that dots all of central Massachusetts. And, you know, I'm very confident that this project, you won't even notice it as you're coming into town once it's built, right? People who don't want it there will notice it. I get it. But most, anyone coming into town is just going to see it as another apartment complex like we have all over central Massachusetts. So this idea that it's not appropriate for that area, I don't know who gets to say that, why that's not appropriate for that area, what area, would it be appropriate? Bottom line is, it's just going to blend right in to the rest of, just like any other apartment complex. The last thing, I've heard some discussion here of SHI. First of all, I don't know why you're talking about SHI, the subsidized housing inventory, because it has no bearing. This isn't a 40B. Doesn't really matter. But just let's be clear, while we may be at 9.1% now, that's permitted, okay? We've been in safe harbor before, and we came out of safe harbor because we didn't, because the builder did not take out building permits. I almost could guarantee you that if we do get into safe harbor, we will be out of it within a year, because I don't think Eastland's going to get their permits. I do not think that Eastland is going to take permits out in the time they need to on Pleasant Street or down on Upton Street, down 140. So I think we will be back out of SHI, just like we were when Eastland came before us a few years ago. So the idea that we've got this 9.1% and we've got thousands in the pipeline, it doesn't really matter and should have no bearing on anything that we're talking about. And I'll also remind you, the development. that we're talking about. And I'll also remind you, the development behind St. James Church that's going up right now, that's a 40B development. Fisherville Terrace is what it's called. It's up behind St. That was permitted over 10 years ago. It's probably maybe 15 for all I know. That's sometimes how long it takes for a 40B development to go from comprehensive permit to actually getting built. And I'll go even a little bit further than that. It's been 24 years since High Point was permitted. We're still waiting on two affordables there. Okay? So just because we have all these things in the pipeline, it's meaningless. People can't live in a pipeline. We need houses. We need houses now. And with that in mind, please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from this room? Yes.
Shelley Hall, 17 Sartell Road. I hear people talking a lot about this development supporting businesses and how important that is, but how many businesses do we have in Grafton? Very few. We have a tiny number of businesses. Part of the point here was to have some space for businesses so that we would have some businesses to support. I just, you know, there are just very few businesses here and I don't understand how you it has, in my mind, I agree, something needs to be put there. Housing is needed, but also businesses are needed. And the original proposal to me made sense. This does not make sense to me. I just don't, it just gets rid of the whole idea of improving the business profile of the town. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Angela H. U., 30 Nelson Street, North Grafton. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that are of concern to myself and other residents, which is this project went through a public bid process. It's town-owned land. It's subject to Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16. And this project was put out for bidding, that there was an extension period after 2020 into 2021. One proposal was received. The community had come together to put together criteria. And that criteria is what this proposal was ranked on. And as a result of that, there was a purchase and sale agreement that was entered into on October 29th of 2021. It was good for one year. After that period expired, nearly six months passed, this developer did nothing. That proposal, along with that purchase and sale agreement, was dead in the water. This isn't private land. This is public land. To say that this property should just be pushed through, the only reason why we don't have affordable housing coming to Grafton, the only reason why we don't have housing being built, is because we have developers who are receiving a benefit on the town's watch and on the town's dime to have property sit vacant. It says right in the extension that this developer did nothing to notify the town for six months of its intention to do anything with this project. Yet the select board went ahead and entered into an extension, completely in violation of the bidding laws, completely not giving anyone else an opportunity to come forward, have any awareness that they could have submitted a proposal, sat on it for a year, waited another six months, sat on it again, while this town and the townspeople said, we need housing and we need businesses. We need mixed use. It's this developer here that folks are, are talking about tonight and we're talking about giving an exception to. To make matters even worse, there's an extension that's entered into and that extension brings it out until 2025. And it's very questionable if there's ever been an escrow payment made to the town, if the original terms of the RFP, along with that first extension, were ever honored by this developer. More so, we get into 2023 and in 2023, we end up not with one. Under the MBTA Communities Act, we're required to have one district zoned for high-density housing near the MBTA station or within a half-mile radius. This town ends up with five. This project is nowhere near the train station. People like me who live near the train station, we can hear the train, we can see the train, we understand in that community the benefits that come from looking to build in an area that high-density housing. To say that this project should just be pushed through is giving a benefit to this proposer that was never afforded to any other proposer. And if we're going to do this with Grafton's property, then there's a real question of what we're going to be doing with other town-owned property. If we're allowing this property to come through, what next? Who gets to come in and masquerade a proposal, which still exists on this town's website, still is in the newspapers, offering mixed use in a village mixed-use setting? And yet, behind the scenes, there's discussion, not an amended proposal, not a whole new public bid process as required under the public bidding laws, but instead, one proposer, based in Fort Lauderdale, shows up and passes an LLC and says, I'm really here. I'm really here in Southborough. But he's in Fort Lauderdale. The whole business is set up in Fort Lauderdale. What's good for this developer is not what's good for Grafton. And I've heard the townspeople tonight say, we need housing. We need housing and we need jobs to support that housing. That's why this was so attractive to the townspeople. This Affordable Housing Trust, let us all not forget the recent history of the money that's in that Affordable Housing Trust with a developer like Pulte Homes, who this town had to bring to court, had to sue because that developer was exceeding under the law what its profit was. $53 million lawsuit. This town ends up with $900,000 and less than that after it's done paying legal bills. We've got a developer here, private enterprise, who's getting money from that Affordable Housing Trust to fund its own design. If at the head of this, we have an architect, how does that architect show up in an original proposal and say it has its financing in place, but actually needs the town's money from prior litigation, from community preservation funds, to be funding its own design ideas that it hasn't gotten off the ground since the time it submitted its proposal back in 2021? Is this developer even aware that by accepting those funds, that they just made this project subject to prevailing wage rates in Massachusetts? That just raised the cost of what it's going to take to construct this housing. Are the townspeople here even aware of what's happening to their dollars, that trying to get affordable housing here, we just raised the cost of it? This property, its assessed value is what was put forward in 2020. We're here now in 2024 and we do, are not having any information about the benefit that this developer is getting. This developer, when he goes to put forward these as market rate units, they're not market rate units based upon funding from 2019 or 2020, based on that type of an assessment. It's going to be based on rates whenever, whenever they finally get through their designs and get to this. There's people like myself that have lived here for a long time and Prentice Place, that's right in my neighborhood, right where I walk by. That developer didn't finish the sidewalks in that area. That developer didn't even finish putting a top coat of loam. Those people have rocks all in their grass. If you take a walk through the parking lot, you'll find cars for Vermont, New York, Illinois, Connecticut. We're talking about building for Grafton, for Grafton residents. It starts to really beg the question about these developers. Who are we bringing in? And if it's folks that are going to school here, maybe they need housing built closer to their campus. The sidewalks was mentioned in this project. I was here at a prior meeting. This developer made very clear, there are no sidewalks being funded in this project. This developer very clearly said, contact the state somewhere down the road. The state will be responsible for putting in sidewalks. What's been put forward to this town is a fraud. And we deserve better. Everyone in this town deserves better. And if this town sits by and allows this project to go through, what other projects are we going to allow to go through? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you for your comment. There was a lot there. I just want to confirm that the town of Grafton is not required to have their MBTA overlay district within a half acre. What we are allowed to do is what, we are allowed to do what we did. I did want to also clarify that sidewalks are being proposed as part of this project. So that's that. And also, the, just a point about the PNS, you know, the select, the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over the purchase and sales process. I mean, this, it plays into what we're discussing this evening into this project, but I just want to be very clear that this board does not negotiate the terms of a PNS, sign for a PNS, and we obviously will consider that and consider everything that folks are saying this evening, but I just, I want that to be clear because I think that might be, people might get confused.
Bob? Yeah. On all the business about the PNS, I agree, but there are a lot of people with differing opinions who are, many are posting concerns with this question. And I think, okay, then I get that question. I should be able to answer it because, you know, I'm up here. And I can't. And I think it would help the process, like some of the other things I've asked for, to have, have that addressed and, and get it settled once and for all, so that it's not constantly pulling, pulling on us one way and another.
If I may, Mr. Chair, and I don't want to take up too much more time, but you have to, so just to reiterate that the town administrator and I are, are looking into that and confirming, you know, with counsel that everything is being done appropriately and we continue to, to do that. So I just want
But I'd like to see an explanation
Yes.
That we can
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Such and so happened. This, it's allowed under that, this and that, you know, who said what and
Yep.
Yes. Do we have anybody here who has not yet spoken who wants to speak?
Colleen Roy, 53 Elmwood Street. I've been following this project since the original gateway to Grafton meeting back in 2019. I support this project. I look forward to this project being built. And I just wanted to correct some of the misinformation we just heard about the Pulte Homes settlement. That was for $1.3 million and the town did receive $900,000 after fees.
Okay. Before I get back to you, Bill, I'd like to, you know, give anybody else who has not had a chance to speak an opportunity. If there's no one else here in the room at the moment, I'd like to ask if there's staff upstairs, if there's anybody in conference room F who would like to speak? Give Natalia a moment to
Yes, great. Hi, my name is Daniel Gregoire. I'm at 189 Whistler Street. I just want to say that I am generally in favor of this kind of project and I'm in favor of its location. I also agree with all of the comments that preceded about its appropriateness for the spot. I want to see multiple family housing in the center of Grafton, but I want it to be appropriate to the setting and I want it to include mixed-use, community-use businesses as was originally proposed. So I hope that we can see that in a project that gets located there.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else in room F?
Does not appear we have anybody else in room
That's all we have for questions.
Thank you, Natalia. Mr. Chair, there was two raised hands, two open, two raised hands on Zoom, two open Q and As, one question from Anne Marie Foley was answered, but there are two open questions in the Q and A and then two, three raised hands now.
All right, let's take the Zoom attendees, the raised hands, starting with one who's identified as Craig.
Sure.
You're all right?
Yes. Name and address.
My name is Craig Puller. I'm 55 Miriam Road. I've been a town resident for over 60 years. I don't support this project and the way it's set up. Very concerning to look at hearing what the original plans were and then seeing the new plans. And the last thing I would ask for is follow-up, because it sounds to me a little bit of a bait and switch, where I'd love to know the context of what happened with the original bidder, if they ended up selling to the new developer. I don't know any of those details and whether the select board did sign off on this new proposal and how different it was from the original proposal. That's it.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Cheryl. And if Craig, you could lower your hand if you're done.
Oh. Hi, I'm Cheryl in Reno, 89 Keith Hill Road. I would have loved to have been in the room, but I figured I'd let somebody else have a chair. I'm generally in support of this project. I don't think it's a perfect project. I wish that there, that some of the things that had, it looked like we were getting, we were still getting, but we really need the housing. And as far as what businesses these people will support, I mean, we've got Uncommon Cow, we've got Bushel and Peck, we've got the thrift store under the church, we've got the beautiful antique store. We have Apple Tree Arts, which might get new students or certainly new people for their concerts. We've got the little country store across the street, the library, all of these things easily within walking distance that will get more customers. If something, if a new restaurant goes in the Grafton Inn, I understand that the bank is going to be turned into a breakfast place of some sort also. So there's plenty of businesses in the common that would use these extra people. And we really do need the housing. It, I shudder when I hear people say, we can meet SHI and then we just stop because, just because we met SHI doesn't mean we've actually met the need for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Chantel.
Mute. Lower hand. Chantel Kimball, 5 Bigelow Way. I wanted to just take a couple of minutes and make sure that we're not forgetting about the stakeholders who don't have a seat in the room because they don't live here yet. And they get left out of every one of these conversations around development because we don't know who they are yet because we keep not building the housing. You know, I've heard a lot of comments about the character of the building not fitting in with the rest of the common. Given the distance between this building and the actual historic district, that surprises me a little bit that that is that much of a, a sticking point. Particularly given the appearance of what is currently sitting there now. So again, I kind of question whether that is a sincere sticking point or whether it's merely an effort to block pretty much any development as tends to happen here in Grafton. The other piece that I'm really confused about why it's such a sticking point for folks is the fact that it ended up not being a mixed-use property. I'm super bummed about that. At one point, there was talk about a beer garden. That would have been a really great asset to the center. But certainly if it doesn't work in an economically feasible fashion or considering the wetlands and doesn't work for the footprint, then it makes sense that it's not happening. It sounds like, you know, the parking to support both businesses and residences is not practical on that footprint. That's just the reality that we're dealing with. And I certainly would rather have this built as all residential than have it built as mixed-use with a bunch of vacant storefronts, because we have vacant storefronts here in Grafton as well. Additionally, it seems like business would actually add to the traffic when a lot of the to the traffic when a lot of the concerns around the development have been focused on, on traffic. So, you know, I guess I would just hope that the board would, you know, consider those things and consider whether or not the property is actually appropriate as it's zoned, you know, and kind of take, consider some of those complaints that don't necessarily make sense in the context, and also consider those folks who don't have a voice, which are, of course, the future residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is RAK.
Yep, and they also appear to have submitted a question to the Q and A. Be allowed to talk now? Not sure where they went, but I see them at the bottom of the attendees, and it does not appear that these-
Yeah, they lowered their hand. All right, with no, oh.
Hello.
There we are.
All right, fantastic. Thank you for recognizing me. I just had a quick question for Andrea Bresnahan. Last time we had a somewhat streamlined meeting, you said that there were 1,500 new housings in Grafton since 2020. Is that something, does that sound correct?
Please identify yourself by name and address.
Oh, my apologies. Michael Rock, Trinity Avenue. Yeah, so Andrea Bresnahan, last time we had a somewhat abbreviated meeting, you said that there were 1,500 new housing installs since 2020. I checked the numbers. That doesn't seem to be the same number that I come up with. Can you tell me how you got to that number?
Sure, and we can meet offline and go through it because I have a very in-depth list of all the units in the town and everything that's been developed from Village Grafton Woods to Pleasant Street to Alfonso Village to Fisherville Terrace that's coming forward, Prentice Place. You add all these up, and that's how many units you get to, and then that's not even talking about how many cars and traffic that will be on our road as well. So there's a lot here to, to talk about if you want to take it offline, because I just think, as I went through all the SHI units, I know this project isn't part of that, but when I went through all those units too, and just trying to compare what you could even find online to compare where we are, and then taking some of the comments that have come up in other meetings about our SHI units, I know the chair mentioned we'd be at like, what was it, 18, 18% if we did the rest of these projects as well?
That's a hypothetical. It's not, it's not-
Right, all, this is all hypothetical, and some of these projects may not go through, but there's, there's a substantial amount of apartments coming online if we do all of these developments that have been proposed and are, and have, are coming in front of this committee or the ZBA or what other places that they're coming before and, and will be approved or have a green letter ready.
Just, just from my understanding, and we will circle up offline, and I look forward to that, the 1,500 number, that is hypothetical future units, or those are places where people can live now?
They're all, I think, it sounds like all the ones you've read off, Andrea, were future units that may or may not ever get built.
Well, approved July 2021, February 2023, 2020, approved, all of these are approved. Like someone got up and said, "Yeah, anything can happen. People don't file their, whatever. Stuff happens, yeah." But we've approved them, so they may or may not get built.
Yeah, as Mr. McCusker pointed out early, earlier, approved units may never get built. They may get built in 10 years or 20 years.
You can give a proposal. I mean, you just don't know what's gonna happen.
A lot, a lot can happen. A lot can change during those times. Anything else?
No, thank you for clarifying that those 1,500 units were future tents and not already built. Thank you. Bye.
All righty. I see no more hands on Zoom at the moment. The Q and A has two questions in it?
Yes, so the, the person that just spoke was, had, had a question that wasn't answered live, so I'm not sure if we want to give him an opportunity to ask that additional question before we move on. He asked about high-density living on the common where the accidents are. It's more of a question.
Yes, well-
Phrase, you know, statement phrase is a question, more or less.
Yeah, and this, this is, is in fact not on the common. It is near the, fairly near the common, but the, the traffic, the traffic impact assessment had something to say about the relationship between this project and the accidents around the common. And I think you've spoken to that before. I don't know that we need to repeat it.
Correct, correct.
And the next Q and A?
Yes. So this is from Julie Feeny. She would like to comment that this project looks beautiful. I'm very excited about the affordable housing units. I would like to ask if we could revisit having some community space. Seems like it would be a great asset for different groups to meet during times when the library may be closed or to host community events.
That's, that's by way of a comment. I don't know that it needs an immediate response, but we certainly, it's on the record.
What I can respond, Mr. Chair, if that's okay with you, is the, the amenity spaces that are being provided are for the potential residents of the development due to, you know, concerns around liabilities and whatnot. So they, there is no plans to have any public amenity space as part of this project.
Yep. I've got one more hand on Zoom, and then I want to circle back to anybody here in the room who wants to speak. Bill's iPhone on Zoom.
Sorry, bear with me for a second. Okay.
Give Natalia a moment to us.
Angela Achu is no one to mess with.
Yeah.
They're muted now. I don't know if they had something else to add.
Okay. As far as I can tell, we've given everybody here, everybody in F and everybody on Zoom a chance. Like, we have some more people here would like to speak. First off, anybody who's not already spoken?
Good evening. Daniel Horan, 3 Pigeon Hill Drive. So first off, this is my, my second meeting that I've attended here. I am fairly ignorant to the building and planning process and have not been necessarily interested or involved in any town plans to this point. Whether this gets built as is does not really affect me directly, but at face values, looking at the, the plans for this, it does kind of feel like 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag, and it does seem a bit like a bait and switch. I have concerns about traffic, and I don't like hearing things like 140 is pretty safe and seems like a fairly cavalier attitude towards following through on further traffic analysis. I think the opportunity to add affordable housing is great, and I don't think that the visual aesthetics would necessarily get in the way of that. I think in time, we'll get used to whatever there is, as we all seem to have Avalon blindness, but I don't feel like something that seems kind of this fishy in how this whole project came about should just go through. I'd love to see if it is possible to find another plan that can accommodate affordable housing in a way that also provides community space or additional, you know, retail space. And I think that, you know, we should do our due diligence to pursue other options if the playing field has changed since 2019, when this initially kind of got into the pipeline and has now kind of continued through. Again, I also have one specific question, which I don't know if this is in any of the plans, but it seems odd that you're able to add more parking spaces while keeping the barn. I didn't, at some point, I'd love to see how that works out, but yeah, so that's all. Thank you.
I think Bill McCusker back there had his hand up, and Bill Nicholson had his hand up.
So Angela pointed out the things that-
So Bill McCusker, 40 Blanchard Road, again. Real quick, because it was brought up, I know it doesn't apply here, but Prentice Place, a couple of things on Prentice Place. One, the developer has built the sidewalks that was, he was required to build. Two, as far as the landscaping and that sort of thing, the project is not complete. As a matter of fact, landscaping is on our agenda, on a future agenda for the ZBA to address. The landscaping is not complete. So the Prentice Place developer is, is one of the better developers we've had come in town. He's been very good to work with, and I just need to feel a need to kind of set the record straight on some things that were said about that particular developer and that development. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah?
Bill Nicholson, 33 Norris Street, again. Question for the developers. We talk about affordable housing, and, you know, that's definitely needed in town, but how much do you expect to charge for these units, for rent for these units?
I'm not sure exactly what the, what the preset is for, for Grafton, but whatever the state, you know, regulation is.
Yeah, the state has regulations around that.
Can anyone answer that question?
Not often. Bill McCusker has dealt with-
They set the fees based on the median income.
Yeah, I assume these are for AD AMI?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, one bedroom, and I'm going off the numbers that Eastland have provided, a one bedroom's up around like 1,800 bucks, if I remember correctly. I mean, yeah, it's kind of a joke, but it's more affordable than otherwise. So it's set by, so, so just so everyone understands, it's set by the state. It's based on the average median income for Southern Worcester County. So they basically take whatever the average median income is in, in this area, and they establish some percentage of that as what you can afford to pay for housing, and that's what the rents are based on. It's dictated by the state. They have absolutely no control over it. It's adjusted yearly based on the AMI. And you, and yeah, it's not, they're still not cheap, but it's better than 100%.
Thank you. There was a hand in the back there.
They're doing 80%, right? I think I asked-
Yeah, they said 80%.
No, it's, it's based, people who make 80% of the average median-
John Stevens, 17 Milburgh Street. I would like to say I'm very heartened to hear that you are looking at alternatives for the barn. That makes me feel good. I think that's, that shows good faith, compromise, trying to work with the community. Who knows? It could be community space. I work with a nonprofit that would love to have a little space there. I think there'd be a lot of nice space for businesses that could satisfy a lot of people. I think if people work together, everybody gets a little piece of what they want. This certainly isn't, this wouldn't be the project I'd design, but if I can get what I'd like and other people can get what they'd like, I think if everybody goes away with something, that's a good thing. And I appreciate you guys trying.
Thank you. Anything else at this point? Obviously, we are going to be continuing this discussion. You know, you guys have mentioned earlier, you're doing some additional planning work and, and digging into various things, so we can expect this to be continued. I would like to make one observation, which I think is relevant here, that in 2020, in June of 2020, Town Meeting voted to create this mixed-use zone. Town Meeting voted in 2020 to set the maximum building height here at 50 feet. Town Meeting voted in 2020 to set the maximum density at 20�N per acre. Town Meeting in 2020 voted to allow multifamily use, not part of a mixed use, to allow that in this zone. So the project we have before us is 100% compliant with the zoning that Town Meeting voted for. Keep that in mind. Town Meeting didn't vote for a sketch of a potential design. Town Meeting voted for this zoning in this project. The scale of this project is fully compliant with what Town Meeting voted for. So keep that in mind as we're going forward.
Mr. Chair, if I might-
Yes.
-ask some questions. Okay, so Fiona mentioned the MBTA overlay districts, and someone had mentioned that we are supposed to have one in this town, and now we have five. And to what you're saying, it was voted on by Town Meeting. So how did we get to that point? Like, how did we get from one to five? And then if 200 people show up at Town Meeting, like, is that really what the town really understands it to be? So can you go back to, take us to that path, how we got there?
The MBTA zoning, the guidelines that came out for that allow us to create an MBTA zone in parts. We are not, we, we were not required to zone a single area near the train station for that purpose. The, the rules that they gave us to work with specifically allowed us to do exactly what we did. And the reason we did what we did was because we could cobble together a compliant MBTA zone from five pieces that we already had in place in Grafton. Two village mixed-use zones, two existing 40R smart growth overlay zones, and one new 40R smart growth overlay zone. So we were able to put that together without rezoning a whole major portion of town, which is what a lot of other MBTA communities were struggling with and are still struggling with.
So we ended up with five?
We had, we had five parts of zoning already in town that we could put together to be fully compliant with the MBTA communities.
And who was involved in that conversation? Yourself and who else?
The entire planning board, and then we brought a town meeting, and Town Meeting voted in the affirmative. Whether or not it was 10 people or 200 people or 1,000 people at Town Meeting, it's still what the town voted on, the people that showed up for our, our town meeting. We're not representative. We're not, a different type of town meeting. So that's what we-
Is it called VMUGW? Is that the?
VMUGW is the Village Mixed Use Gateway Zone. That's a zone that was created in 2020 for the purpose of redeveloping the old DPW.
So should we read that out loud to the crowd? Because this is what, this is what should be developed then, is what's in our zoning bylaws, right? This, this section? This is what we voted on then? Is that what you're telling me?
We voted that, among other things.
The purpose of this district is to provide redevelopment opportunities along Upton Street that will restore the traditional village character to this area. Redevelopment of these parcels will promote opportunities for local small-scale businesses and more den, moderate density mixed-use and residential uses, including the production of housing affordable to a broad range of age, income, and household types. Redevelopment will create vibrant pockets of mixed-use activity, mixed-use, that allow pedestrians and bicyclists to easily collect historic town center and adjacent recreation conservation lands.
And then when you, then when you follow up on all the details, the parameters that we spelled out for that, that's just a broad statement of purpose. But remember, the actual zone, the actual building height, maximum density, the different allowable uses, those were voted by Town Meeting. In, in concept, to be consistent with that, but turns out that it allows, it, it, it doesn't precisely align with it.
It's just a concept. I understand.
But what matters are the actual parameters that we voted. What matters is the scale that Town Meeting voted to allow to be built here. And what we see is within that scope of that scale. It is more than what we expected. It is more than what I expected, but it is not more than what the zoning actually allows.
Bob? Could you compare the total area of our five zones versus the area that the MBTA requires us to have?
In principle, the MBTA law basically requires us to zone something like, oh, gosh, the total acreage, and I don't remember off the top of my head.
50?
Yeah, 50, right. So the total, the total acreage required by the MBTA law is 50 acres of multifamily zone within a half mile of the MBTA station. We did not have to fully comply with that-
Right.
-because the majority of the land within half mile of the MBTA station was not available for development.
Yes. It's one overlay district. It's not five. It's one. And we checked with council. We submitted our compliance application. We have not gotten a letter from the state confirming that our MBTA application has been approved. It was deemed complete, but this, there was several hearings leading up to that, many in front of this board. We've talked to many different boards and committees. We have a project page. We did a lot of outreach around that process.
So if they don't, if they don't approve it, then it doesn't affect this project? We just do anything?
Right, this, right, this, this project is being reviewed under the Village Mixed Use zoning.
Oh. Okay.
Now, what, what makes that more complicated to, you know, to get straight in your mind is the fact that our MBTA zone, which consists of five zones, five subzones, one of which is this, defers to the underlying zoning. In this case, the MBTA zone basically preserves the rules of the VMU gateway zone. So we didn't, the MBTA did not change the zoning rules here.
So how many houses, how many apartments can they have under village mixed use before the, before we give them more? What is the total number?
Could be 150.
140.
140.
Not under village mixed use.
Up to 20 units per acre.
No, without the special permit, we're here to do the special permit.
Without the special permit, they could build 84 houses, 84 units.
That's under the MDT, MBTA, under village mixed use. Fiona and I did the math, it's 56.
This, this is, I know it gets confusing, but under the village mixed-use zone, you are allowed 12 units per acre by right with no planning board review whatsoever. On this site, 84 units could be built, 84 apartments could be built by right with no planning board review at all. The maximum possible, and again, under village mixed-use zoning with a special permit, the maximum possible is 140 units. And in fact, the original proposal had 136 units, we're now down to 122. But if this were to be further reduced down to 84, the planning board no longer has a role in it.
One other. This is the second half of my question. 50 acres is what the MBTA requires. And I was, what I was asking is, how many acres do we have in our five subzones?
I think, if I remember right, it was something like 69 acres that we ended up with.
I'll have to confirm that, I don't know that, the number off my head.
It's somewhere in that neighborhood.
So it's a bit more than the minimum?
It's more than the minimum.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the different parts we had to put together, that's the way it worked out best.
I just had a question about the, the village mixed use. So in going through the materials, there's four areas. The other areas, it seemed like they were eight per acre?
Yes.
And then this one was changed to 12. Do you know when that happened? How that happened?
This, Town Meeting voted that. When we created this village mixed-use gateway zone, the, what, what Town Meeting voted for when we created that was 12 units per acre by right, 20 units, 20 units per acre by special permit. And that was different. The other village mixed, the other three village mixed-use zones are eight units per acre by right, 16 by special permit. I don't recall, I, I don't recall whether this board was involved in discussions to that level of detail. We, the town had hired a consultant to basically, you know, put together this idea, but my best recollection is that the higher density was due to the relatively small size of the parcel and the fact that a half of it is wetlands.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we have two comments in the Q and A, and Bill's iPhone hand is still up, and I don't know if that's because they didn't get to say what they wanted to say the first time, but.
The hand, they come down and went back up, sorry.
Okay, so maybe, you know, Mr. Chair, let me know how you want to proceed with the comments.
Let's, let's take the Q and As.
Okay. All right. So Patty Eppinger has commented, what accommodations have been made to ensure the privacy of North Street residents? Are there plans to plant buffer plants? Given this is an apartment complex, do you have plan, plan to have lights on at night? Also, to get a sense of scale at four floors, how does this complex compare size-wise to the Grafton Inn or to the Town House building? So do you want to give the applicant an answer, opportunity to answer some of the questions?
As far as buffer plants and lights on at night, if the applicant could answer that.
Sure. As I mentioned before tonight, we do, are adhering to the 10-foot minimum planted buffer along all property lines. And that is comprised of a variety of, you know, trees, shrubs, varying heights. We are proposing lighting within the parking lot. We did submit a photometric plan to the board. It does need to get reviewed because it's one thing that lags off in with some of our design iterations. And that's, you know, our typical design where it light shielded and directed directly onto the parking spaces versus, you know, the glare out and upward. Probably lower, I don't remember off the top of my head what the height of the light poles are, but that's something that we can be sure to clarify in the next round.
So we have yet to see the lighting plan? We have yet to see the lighting plan?
You have, you have a photometric plan.
Okay, we have it.
It will be updated, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you're probably not proposing any floodlights from the very top of the building.
Absolutely not.
I would hope not, for a lot of reasons, besides just the impact on your neighbors. And the last part of Ms. Eppinger's question is how this complex compares size-wise to the Grafton Inn. I think you noted earlier during the flyby that the Grafton Inn is three floors plus a cupola. The Town House building, I think, is four floors altogether, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
I believe that is correct. I also don't know that exact answer off the top of my head, so.
The second Q and A?
Yes, sorry. It's Ms. Eppinger again. Is the entire plot buildable? VMU allows 12 units per acre. However, I understand there is some wetlands, how does that factor in? So I believe there was discussion about that just now.
Yes, the, the wetlands limits how much of the parcel can actually be built, but the units per acre is based on this, the size of the entire parcel. Bill's iPhone still has a hand up?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Bill Yeoman's, 297 Providence Road. I'm a member of the ZBA, but I'm asking this question as a private resident. The, the 40B projects in town require 10% of the affordable units to be three-bedroom units. That's a regulation of the 40B comprehensive permits. How many three-bedrooms units, the affordables? How many of the 31 affordables are going to be three-bedroom units?
Can the applicant answer that?
The exact bed counts at this time haven't been completely determined, but it's the appropriate percentage mix based on what the, what the beds will be. So whatever the, the state regulations are. This is not a 40B.
Right, understanding that this does not have to follow all of the 40B regulations, but this does have to follow whatever state regulations apply to.
Correct.
Non-40B affordable developments.
Correct.
Through the chair, if I may.
So, so that's a, that's an incomplete answer. So at this point, and, and I guess the reason for my question is that some people have spoken in favor of this project because it's going to allow families to move into town. But I, I, I would like to be assured that if this project were to go forward, that 10% of the 31 units, or round it up, it would be four units, that would be three bedrooms, because two-bedroom apartments do not accommodate a family. And these projects are being put in place to encourage families who are in need of housing to find it. So I would just ask that if this project were to be approved, that it should include the minimum requirement, which is attached to a 40B comprehensive permit, of 10% being required. And I don't think that there is any particular requirement relative to this is a general development. It happens to be in a village mixed use. And the 10% was raised, the, the original project required 10% of the units to be affordable. The Affordable Housing Trust has granted to this developer $1.8 million to increase that percentage from 10%, which was normally required in the village mixed use, to the 25%, which will generate the 31 housing units. I just want to ensure that this project, if it were to be approved, it should be approved with the 10% or at least four three-bedroom units to accommodate families that want to move to Grafton. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Fiona, you had a question for the?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's some, there's bedroom breakdown, ones and twos on the plan sheets that we just need to get some, get a clean, clean plan set, if that's changing.
Okay.
That would be the, yeah.
All right, are there?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, I see a hand there. The hand was hidden from me for a moment.
Shelley Hall, 17 Sartell. I, my question is about the remote parking lot. Can you tell me exactly how far the remote parking lot would be for a potential resident to walk? Is it a quarter of a mile?
Probably less than a quarter mile. I don't have that number.
Okay. It, I know, just confirm for me, that is on the far side of the residence that goes between the wetlands area and the actual building, right?
There's, there's a boardwalk that goes over the, the wetland. That's like 600, or just for.
Okay. So it's a distance for somebody to walk. Do you worry that that, does anyone worry that that would affect the rentability of a place? I know if I had felt like I needed a shuttle bus to get to my building, I probably wouldn't rent an apartment in a place that required me to park that far away. That's my concern about that.
Isn't that their problem?
I don't think, we generally feel very comfortable with the marketability and, and the amenities and, and the layup.
Well, if you can't market it, then we won't have such crowding.
Yeah, that's kind of a, ultimately, this, the developer here has to, has to be convinced that this is marketable.
And I think, you know, that kind of speaks to one of the questions that was brought up. I mean, so if I may, I, I am local, I've lived my entire life in Southboro, Northboro, Westboro. So just, I'm not from Fort Lauderdale, although my partner is. And also, I think, you know, one thing that's worth mentioning, the extension of time or the time that it took, you know, the pandemic did wreak havoc with a lot of these projects. And, you know, pre my involvement here, it was a real, a real challenge to kind of move the ball along, so.
All right, any other questions from the audience? Do I have anything? Another hand up there? Yeah, thank you.
Colleen Roy, 53 Elmwood Street. And I haven't heard it mentioned tonight, but it might have been previously, that the Affordable Housing Trust does have an agreement with the development for $1.8 million. $700,000 of that has already been paid out, and that's taxpayer dollars that has already been spent and invested into this project, and I think everybody should be aware of that.
For what? Okay.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in conference room F that wants to speak at this point?
Hi, Joyce Kelly, 20 Sartell Road. For what is the $700,000 been spent on so far? Could we have a list of that, so we all know?
Affordable Housing Trust has.
Begs the question.
The Affordable Housing Trust will have all that detail, I don't know that we have that.
All right, well, can they provide that to the community? So we all know?
Mr. Chair, just want to make sure that we.
Fiona?
Hand back there.
They're cool here.
Back there. So I've got one speaker coming up here in the room. Natalia, is there anybody in conference room F that wants to speak?
No, there's nobody that wants to speak in F.
Thank you.
Gail Wixon, 51 North Street. To that last point, I just, after watching the Affordable Housing Trust, I had questions that I thought were probably more appropriate for affordable housing. But since we're speaking of it now, Mr. Grant had said that our council was confused on payments, so they were not making payments. And then other people in the Affordable Housing Trust were saying that they needed more clarification. I think Fiona, you also needed more clarification about something called the pursuit budget. So I think to say that it's all available online, I looked online. If they were questioning this at the latest Affordable Housing Trust, how are the residents supposed to have that information? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point. Yeah, Gail.
Another hand.
Colleen, again? I, I, I think maybe we're nearing the end of what we can do productively this evening.
So Colleen Roy, 53 Elmwood Street. What's available online is there's been 13 draw requests from the Affordable Housing Trust, which totals to $700,000, and every single draw request is available online in detail for what those payments went towards.
All right, I want to, staff upstairs tells me there's nobody in conference room F who wants to speak. We do have two more Q and As.
Yes.
Let's take those hopefully fairly quickly.
Yes, so Ms. Eppinger, with her third question, as proposed, aren't the apartments currently studio one and two-bedroom units? So we did just touch on this. The applicant will be adhering to the requirements of the lip, state, state requirements, sorry. The final unit count, as, as we're hearing, is, is in finalized. The original proposal did include ones, one, studios, ones and two bedrooms. And a follow-up question from Ms. Eppinger is, if the funds went to the developer, why can't the developer say what the $700,000 has been used for? I do believe we, we just covered that as well. And we, the information that what the money, the Affordable Housing Trust allocates, all of that is available, it's public, publicly accessible information. I am happy to provide that to anybody who is interested. The Housing Trust has, keeps track of that. And all of the bills are approved in a meeting, voted on by the board, and this developer, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust has pushed back on several requests for payment and asked the right questions and have been doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I just want that to be clear, you know, it's, it's a vote of the board, and there's always a, a discussion. It's, it's not something that's just approved or somehow passed through. I think that there's a misconception there, so I just want that to be clear. And I think there's another question.
Can I interject something? Fiona?
Um, if, John, if you could hold on for one second, Patty has a follow-up question asking if a member of the Affordable Housing Trust can speak to this, which I'll let the chair make that decision, but I do really want to avoid having a back-and-forth dialogue about, we're getting a bit off, I know that this is, this is relevant, but we do need to be cognizant of the time and be respectful of people's time. So, Mr. Chair, you know, take it from there.
I would, although, John, you, you, you can speak to this hopefully briefly, I would like to have the Affordable Housing Trust deal with the questions about how the Affordable Housing Trust's money has been spent or is, is being spent. Now, we can't, we can't fully address that here because the Affordable Housing Trust is not present at this meeting.
That's out of our scope.
Can I?
John?
Just one thing, I want you to know that we mash dollar for dollar, every dollar of the Housing Trust put in the project. So they have $700,000 in it, we have $700,000 in it. Plus, we have probably about three years' worth of work putting the project together. And we did change the design three times to try and get with the correct market, because, as you know, interest rates have gone from 3% to eight, eight and a half to 9%. And the, and the capital markets have not been interested in developing house. So I think I'm being characterized as a bait-and-switch person. None of this has been bait-and-switch. We followed up every time, made changes in the plan with the city manager, as well as with the, with the head of the, with the head of the planning board, or the planning director. So this wasn't something that we did in, behind closed doors. This is something that was an iterative process that took place over the last three years. So I just wanted to put that out there because I don't like being characterized as someone who's. as someone who's not doing what they say they do. Our company has been in business for twenty years, and we've done everything we say we're going to do with every group we work with. So, thanks for giving me that time.
Thank you.
We're not a city.
Yes, we, we, we're. We are most definitely a town and not a city.
So far.
Sorry about that, town manager.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not going to propose that we start thinking about becoming a city.
Good thinking, Dave.
That's another, a conversation for another time.
Yeah, after I'm gone.
I, I've got one more Q and A.
Sure. The original RFP was advertised as mixed-use. Why not re-advertise if the build-out is now only residential? I'm sorry, this is from Brian Mel. So, will we read that again? The original RFP was advertised as mixed-use. Why not re-advertise if the build-out is now only residential? You would have more developers interested in this site. Also, what happened to the proposed senior housing? If I may, Mr. Chair, I, I believe that that's been covered.
Yes, I think we've, we've discussed that at some length. I don't know what proposed senior housing the gentleman is talking about. If it's the original project proposal, which was to be oriented towards seniors, I think we've adequately covered how that's changed. There's also a proposed senior housing somewhere else in the vicinity of the common, which is not the topic of this conversation at all. So, anything else from the audience at this point? Again, keep in mind that we will be continuing this hearing to another date and time, and hopefully there will be more answers. I think one of, one of the larger questions that's come out of this has been related sort of the, the evolution of the project and, you know, people wondering whether the way in which this has changed is somehow consistent with the original RFP and the whole process. Fiona had mentioned that she and the town administrator have been reviewing that material, and I would expect us to be, be able to have better answers at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? I think it would be appropriate to invite the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust to our next meeting, as well as the chair of the select board, because someone, the lady also mentioned that we've already spent one-point-whatever million of our tax dollars on affordable. So, somehow that's tied to the fact that we have to vote positively for this. I mean, is there a chance we get that money back then, so the Affordable Housing could tell us that? You know, these questions about the, the project itself and the select board coming up, maybe they could be here to answer some of these questions. In that way, we don't have to keep coming back at another meeting and getting the answers. I mean, every time these questions come up and are answered, I mean, we're just going to keep coming back and coming back.
Follow up with the, those bodies and see what, what we can arrange.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Can, obviously can't make a commitment for someone who's not here, but it's worth exploring.
Sure, yep, absolutely.
And if there's nothing else, anything else from anybody on the board? It's, it's not yet ten o'clock, which is a good thing. I, I don't know that any of us had an appetite for holding the meeting beyond ten. Sort of the next obvious question is, when shall we meet again?
We would like to be on the next possible agenda. Possible, I think that we'll be able to discuss some of the questions that came up today, you know, in a chronological type order, as well as be able to focus on some of the technical, you know, technical points and.
So, this, this board's next meeting is two weeks from now, August twelfth. I, I know we have a fairly full agenda already for that evening, but I think, yeah. Unless, unless we have any reason not to, we could accommodate this, add this to our agenda. Andrea?
I think we have a real reason not to. I'm just saying because the last meeting got so full that we ended up having to, people had to leave the room, and then they couldn't stay, maybe even if they wanted to hear another project because they, you know, were asked to leave to make room. And it's like, this could happen again, and then we have to postpone it again. So, we need a separate meeting for the size crowd.
Mr. Chair, if I may, it, it is two thousand twenty-four, there's a Zoom capability. I have never had a meeting in my professional career that was extended because of the room size.
It was due to the fire safety issues and.
No, but, I don't understand, but people can log in, and everybody has a smartphone that they can watch and participate. I just, it's a hardship because of the size of the room that we cannot accommodate these meetings.
And, and keep in mind that the arrangement we made tonight, we can, we can do the same thing in two weeks.
If the rooms are available.
Right, as of right now, there is no room reservation for F in two weeks.
So, we, 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 we can put our dibs in on room F for two weeks from tonight. And yet, it's, it's less than ideal, but we have a lot of people interested in this project. We'll probably have a lot of people interested in the other. But again, as we did two, a week ago, folks were, not, not everybody is interested in all the projects, but I think we have an arrangement now where we can accommodate close to a hundred people.
Just want to be respectful of your time. I, we certainly appreciated the, you know, consideration for tonight's hearing. So, if that's better than that, we're certainly open to it. But the idea of having to get on the agenda to continue it, you know, would just like to have some sort of certainty that we'll be able to be heard.
Yes, well, as I said, we found an arrangement tonight that seems to work.
Yeah.
It's, ideally, we would have had everybody in one room, but practically, as a practical matter, we did accommodate everybody who wanted to come.
And if everyone in town wanted to come to a meeting, I don't think we'd have anywhere in town that could accommodate them outside of trying to find a giant open field.
No, the, the two auditoriums in the schools are much bigger. And there have been, I think, the ZBA many years ago, yes, for the thing on Creeper Hill Road before you, Bill. But the problem is that they don't, they're not set up for Zoom. So, no, maybe. Oh, and they have to be, the, the schools have to happen to have them available. And they plan.
So, I will move that we grant the forthcoming written request to continue this hearing until August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven-thirty P M.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing done. Ms. Bresnahan?
No.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Assinger?
Aye.
Mr. Ben Catraman?
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried by a vote of four in favor and one against. This hearing is continued. Same time, same place, same places, plural.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and participating.
And we're here.
We voted to.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. That's the planning board meeting be adjourned.
This is the DPW. Ms. Bresnahan? This is you.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Ben Catraman?
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. We are adjourned.